Okay, we're live.
Okay, good evening to everyone and welcome to Harrisburg City Council's legislative session. Today is April the 13th, 2021. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Ms. Houston, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Matson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
President Williams.
Present. Thank you, Ms. Houston. And now we'll move on to the invitation, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, President Williams. Good evening, everyone. I just ask that we please keep our nation, the families of Mr. Ronnie Wilkerson, Mr. Chance King Henderson, Mrs. Jacqueline Little, Mr. Kiwan Cook, and Ms. Jerry White in our thoughts and prayers. If everyone could please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. We now will move on to the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Allen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We now move on to communications tonight. We receive an update on the new CSA position with the Harrisburg Police Department. Mr. Blake Lynch, are you available this evening?
I am, Madam President.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm well, and yourself?
I'm fine, thank you.
Sure, with regards to the CSA program, the hiring process is going very smoothly. We're actually very excited about the applicants that we've received so far. Thus far, human resources have received over 140 applications for CSA positions, with the majority of those residing in the city. We have begun the interview process. We've interviewed almost 15 people so far, and we have still more scheduled. So we've narrowed down that list, and we're very excited and very hopeful about the candidates we've interviewed so far. And it will be five candidates who would be exterior, external candidates, and two people who have actually bid internally for the position as well. So, we're excited about that.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. And certainly, please come back next week and probably give us a further update on the, how they're going with the CSA positions. I'm sure our public safety committee chair, Ms. Green, are you on there? Okay, Ms. Green, do you have any questions for Mr. Blake Lynch?
Um, not many questions. I know I was supposed to be involved with the interviewing process, but I hadn't heard anything. So, you said you started doing interviews. When did you start doing interviews? And at what point in the process would I be involved?
Sure. We wanted to narrow those people down for you, Councilwoman Green, as well as in the mayor. And I think some others have expressed interest as well for second rounds of interviews. So we are going to do a preliminary background on people that we want to move forward with. And then from there, then to have second interviews. And we'll involve you then at that point.
Okay, and how many initial applications or initial second round interviews do you plan on doing?
Uh, our goal hopefully is to capture around 20 people that we want to interview. We have a finalized list of 25, so we're moving down that list again to try and create the most diverse, you know, pool possible for all of those applicants, especially with the majority of those having the passion of putting our city residents first.
All right, and then when you say we, who all is a part of this interview and narrowing process?
Sure, myself, as well as Captain Milo Hooper, who is in charge of the Community Services Division, and either the Commissioner Carter or Deputy Commissioner Swartson is a part of the initial interviews. And then from there, as well as a representative from HR, and it's been Joanie so far for the majority of the interviews.
Okay, that's the only questions I have at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green, and thank you, Mr. Lynch. I know you're on a tiny string here, but thank you for being this evening just to give us a short update on the CSA.
I have a question.
My pleasure.
Okay, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you. Good evening. You mentioned that 140 applications were received with the majority of applicants from Harrisburg. Could you define the majority? How many of those applications are residents?
Sure, we've received over 140. That's safe to say, so within 140, 150 applications. And unfortunately, all of those persons with resumes and applications received, so not everyone had their address provided. But of those that did, the majority were listed as city residents. So we did receive city residents as well as those in the immediate area, such as Susquehanna Township, Henbrook, Steelton, Brighton immediate area, and then others from outside of the area, even as far away as Columbia, Pennsylvania. You know, so we had a wide range of people who were very interested, and I guess a lot of positive news provided about these opportunities, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bowers, I meant to ask if any council members had any additional questions. Councilmembers, any additional questions to Mr. Lynch?
Yes, has there been an MOU signed with the DA's office regarding these positions?
With what regards, Councilwoman?
Again, going back to the duties and, you know, is there an MOU with the DA's office?
Uh, well, the CSAs wouldn't really be working with the DA's office. They would be reporting directly to me, and then I would work, I would, I report directly to the Commissioner as well as Captain Hooper.
Yes, so is there an MOU between the DA's office and us regarding those roles?
No, not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Ms. Daniels, there are two different sets of positions, if you recall.
Yeah.
Three positions are the ones that will have the MOU with the DA.
Okay.
And I can check on the status of that. But, you know, we were going to, I believe, be funding the positions that they are going to sponsor, I think was the ultimate agreement after the budget process.
Okay, and will that, will that MOU not only include the funding agreement, but also the, kind of the nature of the roles?
Sure, but, so they defined the job because they'd already had people in that job. They provided one on loan last year. And so that will all be accounted for, and essentially to their liking, if that makes any sense, because they, they're the ones who had originally created the positions.
But we don't have an MOU with a DA regarding the CSAs?
The CSAs are not the same type of position. That we have, we're negotiating an MOU with the FOP on the CSAs because they're taking over work that had been done by police officers that was not necessarily police work, but was, was work being performed by union officers. And then we have a separate discussion with ASME because they are ASME members, and, you know, which would define the job descriptions and scope.
And, and we're not looking at anything else to be covered?
I'm not sure I understand the question, so.
Yeah, just going back again to like, you know, who, you know, like if, going back again to kind of evidentiary rules and, you know. Reporting.
I, I think, but again, the positions are still being developed as we're, this is the first time we're doing it. Whether these employees will be involved in what ultimately become evidentiary issues, I think is still being formulated. But I expect there'll be a lot of adjustment as we have this position come online and the training goes into place. And if issues involve actual courtroom appearances, I think then we would be talking to the District Attorney's Office about that. But it's hard to do it upfront and have it completely work through because there are so many moving parts.
And Councilwoman, we don't foresee that, honestly.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lynch.
My pleasure, thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Lynch. Have a good evening. We now move on to Harrisburg University greenhouse gas inventory update. We have Chris Na giving us the update, Mr. Na, oh, okay, I see you're on. Okay, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Actually, I just wanted to mention, thank you, Council President Williams. The actual update will be provided by the professors and especially the students at Harrisburg University, who the city has been working with on this project. So, starting last year, Harrisburg joined with approximately 20 other municipalities in the state of Pennsylvania, where sponsored by DEP, to work with an organization called ICLI, which helps local governments produce climate action plans. We were partnered with Harrisburg University to do that. The first step in that process was to complete a greenhouse gas inventory, looking at all of the greenhouse gas emissions that are coming from the city of Harrisburg. And that was completed in approximately December. And so we have Dr. Arvind Ravi Kumar, as well as Christine Proctor, and the students Alan Strayer and Marine G Marine to present the results of that now.
Okay, who? Ms. Proctor, will you be speaking first?
Yes, so, thank you, Council President Williams and the rest of the council members for allowing us to come and present the results of our greenhouse gas inventory. And as Chris mentioned, the city of Harrisburg joined in this project with DEP, and that we were, the city of Harrisburg was paired with Harrisburg University in this project. This project generally has two phases, the first of which was the greenhouse gas inventory. And to present that to you guys tonight will be the students who have been working on this. And so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to them, Alan Strayer and Marie Jean-Marie.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Strayer.
Thank you, Madam President. Can everyone see the slide deck on their screen?
Yes.
All right, Marie, if you want to go ahead and begin this presentation.
You're a little low, could you speak up a little? Please, Mr. Strayer.
Sure, yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marie Jean-Marie and my partner Alan Strayer. And today we'll be talking to you guys about the Harrisburg greenhouse gas inventory. Slide please. The greenhouse gas inventory is part of a bigger project, the Local Climate Action Plan Project, which is funded by the Department of Energy. And this year, Harrisburg is one of the 20 communities participating in the second quarter of this project. The project is executed in two phases. The first phase involved the development of the greenhouse gas inventory, and the second phase involved working with stakeholders in the city to determine where greenhouse gas reduction can be made and establish a timeline for greenhouse gas reduction. Slide please. Our greenhouse gas inventory is the process of collecting and calculating data from all the sectors in order to understand the current set of emissions. In other words, the greenhouse gas inventory is the foundation on which the Local Climate Action Plan is constructed. The greenhouse gas inventory is crucial part of the development of this project because it helps us understand the sectors that contribute the most to the city's total emissions and also provide us with guidance on where we can reduce the greenhouse gas emissions. Slide please. The the process of developing the greenhouse gas emission involves understanding the physical boundaries of where our emissions are coming from and our economy sectors such as residential, commercial, and industrial. Not all the data that we receive was assigned to the city of Harrisburg. Most of them were assigned to the state of Pennsylvania or Dauphin County. In order to allocate it to the city of Harrisburg, we use population density. Slide please. To develop, to develop this inventory, we mostly focus on the main economic factors such as residential, commercial, industrial, transportation, and portable water. And from these factors, we focus on the major fuels such as coal and gas for electricity, natural gas, fuel oil, gasoline, and diesel for transportation and waste. Slide please. The data sources that we use were utilities such as PPL data to calculate the electricity for grid emission. We also use PGM interconnect data for emission estimates for PPL electricity consumption. We also use UGI data to calculate the natural gas emissions and the US census to determine the sources of heat for residential homes. We also use the EPA FLY tool to obtain data for the Harrisburg Stream Plant, and we also use the EPA FACT tool to obtain data for factors for the UGI data and allocate it to the city of Harrisburg. We use Capital Region Water for emission data and allocate it to the city of Harrisburg and determine the waste per emission in the city. And we use PANDA to determine the vehicle travel miles for inbound and outbound. And lastly, we use LACSWAM to determine the quantity of solid waste sent to the city by the city. Slide.
All right, thank you, Marie, for that introduction. I'll go ahead and walk us through the results of the greenhouse gas inventory process. So we begin with a top-down look at the emissions from the city of Harrisburg. And so what we're looking at here in this slide are the per capita emissions of various cities across the United States and Pennsylvania. And from what we can see from this is that the per capita emissions from the city of Harrisburg are very much in line with what we would expect to see from other cities in the United States as well as across Pennsylvania. And in comparison to other cities such as Pittsburgh, Lancaster City, the Borough of Etna, and Boston, we see that per capita emissions are somewhat higher when we look at it this way. However, it's important to note that because the city of Harrisburg is a commuter city, and anecdotes suggest that the population of the city of Harrisburg increases by roughly double during the work week, there's some indication that perhaps if we were to account for that population in this calculation, that these emissions numbers might come more into line with what we see from other cities such as Pittsburgh or Lancaster City, other cities within Pennsylvania. And so then when we look at the overall picture of emissions from within the city of Harrisburg, we're talking about the commercial energy sector, residential sector, transportation, mobile sources, as well as industrial energy, solid waste, water wastewater, as well as process and fugitive emissions. In this case, referring to the methane emissions that are leaked from the natural gas pipeline network that runs through the city of Harrisburg. And so what we see here is that the dominant sources of emissions for the city of Harrisburg come from the commercial sector and the residential sector, followed by transportation emissions, as well as from industrial energy. And then we have these three smaller sources of emissions out here. But focusing in on sources such as transportation and mobile sources, what we'll find as we go through this is that a large portion of these emissions either come from, again, that population that's moving in and out of the city because this is a commuter city, or are accounted for in, from emissions from vehicles that travel through the various highway systems that transect the boundary of the city of Harrisburg. And I want to focus in on some of these smaller emitters or these smaller sources of emissions down here on the far right corner of the graph. It's important that even though these account for a small overall total picture of emissions for the city of Harrisburg, they still are important to account for. Such as in the case of solid waste, what we're looking at here is the incineration of municipal solid waste. And so we have to account for more than just the impact of the greenhouse gases that are emitted from this source. We also have to consider the possibility of particulate matter being emitted as well as volatile organic compounds. And so this comes into play when we get into discussions of environmental justice. And what impact do those emissions have on the local population in Harrisburg? And so when we aggregate some of these sources of emissions, and we look at sources such as stationary fuel combustion, which is comprised of the combustion of digester gas and the wastewater treatment process, the combustion of coal, or not coal, the combustion of natural gas and fuel oil for space heating in people's homes, as well as the incineration of municipal solid waste. We also look at the transportation sector, which is comprised of the combustion of diesel and gasoline from cars and trucks. And the overall largest contributor of emissions to the city of Harrisburg comes from the generation of electricity. And what we find is that this sector is comprised of electricity generated from sources that are outside the boundary of the city of Harrisburg, in many cases as far away as the Midwest. So when we look for solutions and how we reduce emissions from this sector, we have to get a little bit creative because we don't have a lot of control over this source. And so I'll get into, on this slide, what the sources of, what the fuel sources are to generate that electricity for the city of Harrisburg. What we find is that roughly 60% of emissions come from the burning of fossil fuels. And of that, about 30% comes from the combustion of coal. And we see about another 30% of emissions comes from nuclear, and then 10% comes from renewable sources such as hydroelectricity, wind, and solar. And then when we break down some of the other sectors to see what are the sources of emissions in those sectors, we find that in the commercial energy sector and the industrial energy sector, we see that these are dominated by upstream electricity generation emissions. Whereas in residential energy, we find that natural gas and fuel oil, both fossil fuels, are the largest contributor to emissions from those sectors. And so in the case of residential energy, when we're looking at potential sources for emissions reductions, we're going to be looking especially at these natural gas sources and fuel oil sources. Can we electrify these? If we can, that will greatly reduce the, the input of potentially particulate matter from fuel oil or methane from the natural gas combustion. And so those are potential options for reducing emissions from this sector. And then when we move on to the transportation sector, we break down the emissions from this sector into five different groups. And the first group that we look at here, which is the smallest, is from off-road emissions. And this includes sources such as mowing the grass or likely the majority of which comes from construction equipment or other off-road equipment such as boats. But then we look at these other four sources, and these are categorized by trip origination and trip destination. So what we're looking at with outbound to outbound, these are emissions that are associated with trucks and cars that transect the boundary of the city of Harrisburg. So they start outside, they pass through, and then they leave the other side and go on to some other destination. When we look at outbound to inbound, these are trips that originate outside and come through the inside. And then we have the inbound to outbound cars that start their destination within the boundary of the city of Harrisburg, and then go outside from there to other places. And inbound to inbound, the second smallest source, are trips that originate inside the boundary and end inside the boundary. And so we see here that the largest source of emissions comes from these outbound to outbound sources. These primarily from diesel trucking and from passenger cars that commute through the area. And so we don't have a whole lot of control over these emissions. These are highway emissions, so there's not a lot we can do there. But when we look at these other three sources, this is where we would focus in order to make emissions reductions from these areas. And since the city of Harrisburg is a commuter city, we speculate that these two particular sources, outbound to inbound and inbound to outbound, may most likely be attributed to those commuters. So what can we do to incentivize emissions reductions through car bowling or other potential options to reduce these sources of emissions? And then again, how can we reduce these, the emissions from within the city itself? So those are things we want to consider when we're going forward in developing our climate action plan. And then when we compare the city of Harrisburg to its nearest neighbor in Susquehanna Township and analyze the emissions profile, what we find is that in comparison, our source of transportation emissions is roughly about half of theirs. And that can be easily understood just by looking at a map and seeing that the linear mileage of these larger highway systems is much longer in their township than it is in the city of Harrisburg. However, we find that when we compare our residential emissions and commercial energy to what we would see there, it makes sense that these would contribute a much larger portion of the overall emissions profile because we have a much higher population density in the city of Harrisburg, and we have a lot more business infrastructure in the city of Harrisburg. So we would see more emissions from these sources. And so to summarize the greenhouse gas inventory presentation, what we find are that the emissions in Harrisburg are predominantly from electricity generation upstream of the city. And so we need to focus on what local solutions can reduce emissions from this particular source. Fuel sources for home heating present tangible opportunities for residential sector emissions reductions. Roughly 25% of overall emissions, for instance, come from home water heating. So through electrification of the systems and insulation retrofits, perhaps we can not only reduce the emissions that are associated with the fossil fuel combustion that some homes have from their natural gas heat or their fuel oil heat. But then we can also, through the insulation retrofits and ever other air tightening methods, we can reduce the amount of electricity then that's needed to provide heat for these homes as well. And then finally, transportation sector emissions are dominated by outbound to outbound traffic. But there is still a sizable contribution of emissions that come from within the city itself. And so what can we do to reduce those emissions? And so, going forward from here, we'll continue to work with the Just Climate Action Plan Stakeholder Group to identify equitable emissions reductions actions. And we'll, further beyond that, maybe into the summer perhaps, we'll utilize community feedback in conjunction with the greenhouse gas inventory to establish targeted emissions reductions. This concludes my portion of the presentation. I believe Christine has some additional comments to this, is that correct?
Yes, thank you. So as we move forward, we are now moving, and Alan alluded to this at the very end of his presentation. We are moving into Phase Two of this climate action plan, and that is developing the plan itself. And we are doing that through two sub-phases. And those two sub-phases include meeting with the stakeholder group. And then from there, we will derive a list of potential actions that can help reduce the, some of these sources of emissions that were identified in the inventory. And from there, we plan to do a series of community outreach events through surveys and town halls to receive community feedback on some actions that the community feels that they would like to take towards addressing some of these issues. And at this point, we would like to open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Proctor, and thank you, Mr. Strayer, for the update on the greenhouse gas inventory. This was very informative. I have quite a few questions. Mr. Strayer, do you think the incinerator in Harrisburg scenario that we have that, do you know how much usage our greenhouse gas is emitted by them?
I don't have a figure off the top of my head, but I could certainly reach out to you after this conversation. I believe we have some data on that to provide some more specifics.
Well, when you look at the residential chart that you showed us, I was wondering if that contributed to the high percentage of admission of gas?
In terms of the In terms of the
Under your chart, under residential, it comes second to the commercial.
Also, we accounted for the incineration of municipal solid waste.
Right.
It's kind of under its own section.
Okay.
Those emissions that we presented are the the total emissions that are associated with what's generated from the incinerator plant.
Okay. Is it fair to state that various areas of the state of Pennsylvania give out, generate more emission gases than others?
I don't have enough data to be able to provide a specific comment on that.
Okay, just concern, I mean, just, you know, questioning. I'll let the other council members go. I have quite a few other, but I'll let them go. Does any other council member like to ask any questions, Ms. Bowers?
I don't have any questions. Thank you very much for being here tonight and for sharing your presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Mr. Allen.
I am good. Thank you for the presentation. A lot to take in and review, so I appreciate it.
Sure. If you have any questions about anything, feel free to reach out to us.
Will do.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Ms. Green.
Thank you, President Williams. I don't have any questions as of right now. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for being here tonight.
You.
Mr. Major, I mean, Ms. Mattson, Mr. Mattson, I'm sorry.
No question for me. Just as an aside, I met with the Environmental Council yesterday to discuss the comprehensive plan. And they told me about this information and how we can sort of hopefully jive the two plans together. But yeah, thank you so much for coming out tonight and all you do for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Mr. Majors.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yes, okay. So seeing where we are now, what would be the next steps now that we have some of this initial data from data gathering and work done by you folks over at Harrisburg University?
At this point, what we're doing, and Mr. Nave can jump in this as well. Now that we have the inventory completed, we are working alongside Mr. Nave and a stakeholder group to come up with a list of feasible actions that potentially could work towards reducing the emissions within the city of Harrisburg. And the idea is, once we have a working list, at that point, then we're going to reach out to the community to make sure that the community has a lot of input in ultimately what we suggest in a plan that would eventually come before this council. But that is where we are right now, is trying to come up with a list of potential actions for the city of Harrisburg in steps that can be taken to reduce those emissions. And many of those things are already in action or are starting to be put into place by the city. And I don't know, Chris, if you want to jump in.
Yeah, so I was just gonna touch on the stakeholder group. So we reached out to a number of organizations that we would have to work with directly or would be directly impacted by the kinds of actions that might come up for consideration by city council and the mayor, such as the utility companies, the Chamber of Commerce, the African American Chamber of Commerce, PA Diversity Coalition. So another number of organizations like that, I believe we have a total of nine that we're trying to work with right now to run through potential solutions and ideas. And once we have something concrete as a result of that process, that's when we're presenting it to city council and then trying to open it up to the same sort of input process that the comprehensive plan has been going through with the general community.
Okay, so then I guess for me, the next thing is to the extent that members of council can be included in any of those.
That was the next thing that Christine had mentioned.
Yep, yep. Okay, yeah, please, please include us. And then in terms of timeline, are we looking to try to have some of those meetings happen this year? And then, you know, the next steps, because, you know, we, because eventually we're going to talk about funding, right? And we haven't necessarily gotten there yet, but, you know, having all this information is great, but, you know, a timeline. So us, you know, also on council and the public can have a sense of when we're going to be looking to address some of these concerns.
In terms of a timeline of when we'd be ready to come back to the council again, would we're looking at end of June, beginning of July? And that would be
Okay.
that step to bring our update back to the council prior to starting that community engagement portion of the project.
Okay. Okay, thank you. No further questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Ms. Daniels.
Sure. So could someone repeat for me again, what's the structure or formal relationship of the project between Harrisburg University and the city? Like, is there a formal relationship or does some of this need to be formalized or how?
It was a program that was created by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, funded by the Federal Department of Energy, where they sponsor the municipality to join that organization, ICLI, that I had referred to, which is designed to help local municipalities create these kinds of plans and programs. And as a part of that, of the the city agreeing to enter that process and be sponsored by DEP, we were paired with a local university, and in our case, it was Harrisburg University by DEP.
So then, once, you know, once your recommendations are made and, you know, you come up with something, is there a foremost, is there, I mean, at this point, is, so is there a formal relationship where this work will mean something or?
The idea is that the end result of this would be an actual formalized plan that would be presented to city council and the mayor to be voted on in the same, in the same vein that the comprehensive plan is. And it's meant to work in conjunction with the comprehensive plan. So if you notice, in the comprehensive plan, there are a number of sections where it refers to goals and action items. And we are looking to try to build out the climate plan to sort of create steps to allow us to achieve some of those goals that are outlined in the comprehensive plan.
Will any of the recommendations that come up be, you know, because the comprehensive plan is an aspirational document and is more of a vision document, so this plan will be similar. Will this one have more specific?
Yes.
Like, actually, like, you know, things that could be adopted.
Yes, that is the express purpose of it.
Okay, that's affirmative. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, council members? Mr. Strayer, I was going to ask you about the per capita emissions, but why they are higher. But I think you said something about the increase in double of individuals coming into the city. Is that correct?
That's correct. And when we calculated those per capita emissions, we didn't take into consideration what the potential, you know, weekly population might be. We don't really have specifics on those numbers. It's really just anecdotally that it's roughly double. So that's why it looks like it's so much higher than other cities in Pennsylvania. But in reality, it might be much lower.
Thank you very much. That's all I have. Any additional questions, council members? Okay, again, I want to thank you everyone for all the hard work you put into this. It was very, very informative. And I want to invite you back again where we can hear the action plan that you have. I would certainly like to see that too, because we were pretty high when we looked at the emission chart. So again, thank you everyone, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council members, we now move on to courtesy of the floor, Ms. Houston. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the council at this time? Ms. Houston.
I'm sorry. Hang on one second here.
That's okay, that's okay.
There are no, currently, there are no public comments for this evening.
Chardin, I do see.
Do you see one? I don't.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. For
Oh, written.
I was looking for written. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Hang on one second here.
Thank you.
There is one hand raised, and it is Pamela Parsons. And I'm going to allow her to talk now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chardin. Thank you, council. I'd like to preface my remarks tonight by just briefly apologizing for kind of attacking Councilwoman Allen and a couple of other I could have perceived that way at last week's meeting. I was very frustrated by the end of the meeting, and I know that my remarks were not helpful. So I'm hoping that what I have to say tonight will make more sense and be helpful. Let me first say that the development that is planned for midtown, especially the one that we were talking about during the public hearing last week that involves the street vacations. I'd like to say that there's a lot about it that I really like. I like that there are portions of it which preserve the urban meadow. I like that it's bike friendly. I like that it's in a place where it is walkable. I like the combination of housing and retail. And I like at least the attempt at being, at talking about affordability. I also want to say how much I appreciated the work that Congresswoman, that Councilwoman Bowers and Jeffrey Knight did in putting together and explaining the package of of housing affordability bills. There's much in that that I like. The idea of waiving some of the parking requirements, of allowing mother-in-law suites, which will really assist a lot of families, I think. I work in long-term care. We are seeing people staying in their homes much longer. And so this will allow more multi-generational housing options for people who want to keep older relatives at home or perhaps they have children who might be on the autism spectrum or something who want to live on their own but not too far from mom and dad. And of course, the discussion about affordability was really important. But the things that troubled me are in talking about timelines, this sort of, oh, well, we can do certain things and we can just do it on a, you know, we can do it on a contingency, we'll take a good faith effort. Those things trouble me, not because they're illegal or unethical or anything like that. They simply trouble me because we don't give that same ability to people who are very poor, who are applying for benefits or programs. They have to have all their ducks in a row before we give them anything. So I'm just pointing out that there is a double standard there. And I find that sort of the giddiness, oh, we we have to do this as soon as possible. I find that frustrating and disturbing. I realize that there is a GSA timeline that the developer has to meet. But, you know, that's not really our problem. And if this land is so valuable because of the courthouse development, and this particular development falls through, there will be others if this land is as valuable as everyone is saying. And if it isn't, well, then maybe we saved some headaches. I appreciate that the developer wanted to talk about having affordable units. But at nine hundred dollars, that is not really affordable when you translate that number into hourly wages, which I think I figured it out at fifteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. Vast swaths of people in our city do not make that much an hour. I mentioned that I work in affordable care. A lot of people who work in affordable, in long-term care, do not make that much per hour. And we're talking about thirty percent of income on housing. So while there will be jobs created with the development of this project, many of the people who will hold those jobs would not be able to afford to live there. In looking at Councilwoman Bowers' package of bills, there's a couple of things that weren't really discussed. And one of those is with, in creating those mother-in-law suites and things like that, have we really thought about the flip side of that, which would be Airbnb? And how much real estate is taken up in our city by Airbnb, which is unregulated? And will that also happen as part of the creation of these units in already existing properties? I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I'm just saying that's something to be looked at. It also troubled me that internet is considered a luxury, not essential. Surely, I could argue that cable is not essential, but internet? We're in the, we're in a pandemic still. Internet is absolutely essential for anyone, for work, for banking, for school. That is no longer, that is no longer a luxury. It isn't a necessity. And I would argue that it needs to be considered, just like heat and electricity. And finally, while I appreciate wanting to hold affordable housing units to twenty percent and using HUD's guidelines, that's only a guideline. And I don't think we should be afraid to do better than that. Nor do I think we should be afraid at adjusting the, our numbers, income numbers based on the real jobs that we have in our community. Thank you very much for this time to speak to you tonight.
You're welcome, Ms. Parsons. Ms. Houston, is there anyone else who would like to speak to council?
Yes, Kamika Campbell has her hand raised, and I will allow her to speak.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Kamika Campbell here. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to to discuss two things. One of the things I wanted to say regards the comprehensive plan, I know we are currently in talks about it. And I also wanted to address another angle of what Pam was saying, Pamela Parsons was saying. And I do absolutely agree with her sentiments. But I wanted to first get some feedback, and it doesn't have to be now, but I do want it there for public comment. In our talks with the comprehensive plan, one of the biggest things that I'm noticing, and I think I've asked this question before, but I never did get an answer to it, but have been kind of, you know, throwing it around with some other folks in the city. And one of the things that we are noticing from our comprehensive plan talks is that, you know, we, we, it seems that there is a fundamental disagreement or misunderstanding about what the comp plan is supposed to do. So I'm, I, and I think, I think part of it is, comes from, from what I'm hearing from our, from our talks, we are not seeing as a community how the comprehensive plan aligns with the budget, with our annual action plan and with other initiatives that are supposed to kind of guide city spending. And it seems like, it seems like, and I, I mean, you know, I don't know, I don't know the inner workings of everything. But it seems like there's more of a concentration with this plan on private, public-private partnerships. And so I did ask this question a couple of months ago, but I think we're really interested in knowing and really interested in understanding the alignment of this plan with the rest of the city. It doesn't seem that there's much focus on that. And I know that while it wasn't directly our, our city's dollars that were spent on this plan, I do know that there was at least, you know, you know, a cool two hundred thousand dollars spent on this plan only for us to keep hearing when we say, well, how does it connect to the budget? How does it connect to the annual action plan? How does it connect to the other things that we say with these bills that we say we want to, that we want to, you know, that are up for final passage tonight? For affordable housing, for, you know, a lot of these other pieces that are. you know, supposed to be kind of pushing the city forward, making room, you know, making room for affordable housing, hopefully. How does it all connect? And how can we have a plan that's supposed to be comprehensive that doesn't connect to these other pieces in a meaningful way? Every time we ask, we are told there's a fundamental, there's a fundamental, we don't understand what the plan is supposed to do. So I just wanted to kind of bring that to the forefront. We want to understand more, but we are always told it is aspirational. We are always told, you know, that it's not, you know, not what we think it is. So we are absolutely looking, we are looking for a clear understanding on what that, you know, what the plan, how the plan connects to all the different things that, you know, are being done every week in city council. And we're looking, we are absolutely looking for it to be more than aspirational. That is a resounding thing that we are hearing from residents over and over and over again. So that's the first part of that, I just wanted to say. And then to Pam's point, I, I wanted to, I wanted to kind of like go over some 2019 numbers and there'll be some more information coming out, I think will be updated soon, but you know, I, I, I also hear from the comp plan discussions and from others' discussions we're having, we need more people in Harrisburg that way we can raise the tax base and do some other things so that we could be a better city. This is kind of the idea that we hear a lot. And I, I always ask this question, a better city for who? Because right now, here are some of the numbers with us compared to the state. So residents with income below the poverty level in 2019, Harrisburg was 26.2%, the whole state was 12%. So that's more than double the, the state average, right? For a city of, you know, a little tiny bit under 50,000 residents. Residents with income below the 50, 50% of the poverty line, 13%, whole state, 5.4%. Poverty rates among disabled males, again, we are doubling the rate of the whole entire state. But when you look at how the, the disability rates among poor males in the city and compared to the state, it's almost identical. Same, same kind of thing with disabled females. We're, we're close to double the rate for this, you know, what we are seeing in the state of Pennsylvania. But when you look at the proportion, how, how we compare on the state level to, for disabilities among males and females, we're almost similar to the state levels of the, the, the part of the population that is disabled and poor. Renting rates in the city among poor and not poor residents, residents below the poverty level are renting at 79.6%, right? Residents above the poverty level are renting only at around 51.5%. So a large portion of the people, so there's a, to go through all those numbers and kind of connect them, a large portion of the people in this city are living below the poverty level. So that's one. And then out of residents below the poverty level, almost 80% of them are renting. That is a lot of people who have the potential to be displaced by high rents. That's a huge, huge thing. Same thing with our disabled population. We have a, for the people who are, are considered poor and disabled, they are in that, you know, that subset of people who are renting in the city that's almost up to 80%. So I just want to echo what Pam and others, you know, we're, we're some of the only ones that are able to get on. But I wanted, I want, I want to, I don't know, really help us put the spotlight on, you know, particularly our poor and disabled, who, you know, we already have a very low rate of accessibility in the city in, on all the various businesses, restaurants, et cetera. You know, like we say, we're, we say we're accessible, but then there are, you know, it's, it's not a universal design that allows people to access everything. And that's the same thing for the part, for, for folks who are poor. Folks who are poor are blocked out of a lot of things. And this affordable housing piece will block them out. You know, if you don't get it right, block them out even more. So I know, I, I do thank council for all the work they're doing. I echo Pam's sentiments. There are some good pieces to it. But that piece about not really putting a spotlight and putting a timeline and putting some real hard expectations on these affordable housing pieces, I think that is very, very concerning for the, for the, some of the data that I shared here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Ms. Houston, is there any additional public comments?
There is no more public comment at this time.
Okay. Check one more time for me, please, before we move forward.
I'm sorry. Say it again?
I just check one more time before we move forward. That's all.
Oh, okay. I'm checking in the attendees for, who joined the webinar. And there are no more hands raised, and then I'll check public comment for via email one more last time. And it looks like there is no public comment via email either.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Houston. We will move on to approval of minutes, council members. Approval of minutes for the legislative session of March 23, 2021. Are there any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing now, the minutes will stand approved. We now move on to reports of committees. Report from Chair Allen on the work session of April 6, 2021. Mr. Allen, are you ready with your report?
I am ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two pieces of legislation up for discussion in budget and finance. The first of it, of which is Resolution 25 of 2021, which is a, a proposed budget reallocation. Highlights of the real, reallocation are centered on a few different areas. The first area to discuss is a reclassification of costs pertaining to the sanitation services we're providing to Steel, Penbrook, and Paxton. We're able to create a specific budget line item to see the true cost incurred, as well as revenue coming in from those accounts, so we understand exactly what those accounts are doing. Also for discussion was a new position for Parks and Rec that was allocated. This was apparently missed in the initial budget presentation that was done in 2020 prior to us approving the budget. Also for discussion was a refund of funds to HUD based on past misuse of allocated funds through CDGB, I can talk. And then lastly, there is a, an allocation to provide for the roof replacement, roof replacement of the public safety building that will be reimbursed by insurance as well, but this is defronted to be able to get the project going on. So those are all the budget reallocations that are up for discussion as part of this Resolution 25. I do encourage my colleagues to unvote an affirmation of this as well, and then click out of this and get back to the other. The other resolution for discussion was Resolution 26, which is Resolution ratifying an RCAP grant application for up to $8 million for renovations to City Hall. This is something that, as many may or may not be aware, every year the state does issue RCAP grants. We have applied in the past. We have not been successful, but this was simply just to ratify the grant application to the state. I also encourage my colleagues to support this resolution. That is the concluded, my conclusion for the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We now will move on to reports of committee from Chair Bowers on the public hearing as well as the work session of April 6, 2021. Ms. Bowers, are you ready with your report on public hearing and the work session?
Yes. Thank you, President Williams.
You're welcome.
On Tuesday, April 6, 2021, the Building and Housing Committee hosted a public hearing to discuss Bill 17 of 2020 and a committee meeting to discuss Bills 16, 18, and 19 of 2020. All bills included within the Affordable Housing Legislative Package. During the public hearing, the committee discussed Bill 17 of 2020. Bill 17 of 2020 is an ordinance amending Part III of Title VII, the zoning code of the city of Harrisburg, to provide certain zoning relief for developments which contain affordable housing dwelling units in the city of Harrisburg to encourage the development of affordable housing throughout the city of Harrisburg. Ms. Tiffany Baldock, Deputy City Solicitor, provided a brief overview of the bill. Ms. Baldock entered City Exhibit II into the hearing record. City Exhibit II consisted of the following, a true and correct copy of Bill 17 of 2020. Mr. Jeffrey Knight, Director of Planning, shared that Bill 17 of 2020 amends Chapter 7-305, which is the designation of zoning districts, and Chapter 7-327, which discusses off-street parking and loading of the zoning code, which appeals to developers. Mr. Knight mentioned the concept of bonus density applied in the form of charts featuring development standards. Mr. Knight discussed the use of an accessory dwelling unit. Finally, Mr. Knight discussed off-street parking and loading. Mr. Knight mentioned that the language shared in the parking and loading portion of the bill is data-based, including residence access to a vehicle and how many vehicles per household. Council members posed questions regarding accessory dwelling units and rooming houses. Public comments concerned parking, density clarification, and accessory dwelling, dwelling unit clarification. A possible technical amendment was identified during the public comment portion of the hearing. The hearing concluded at 7:14 PM. During the council work session, prior to the committee discussion, Councilman Majors and I shared updates on behalf of the Broad Street Market Alliance Board, including an overview of the 2020 operations, a review of the 2021 through 2024 strategic plan, and COVID-19 precautions that have been taken. The Building and Housing Committee then met to discuss possible amendments to Bill 16 of 2020, Bill 18 of 2020, and Bill 19 of 2020. Bill 16 of 2020 is an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg, adding thereto Title 12 entitled Affordable Housing, establishing incentives for the development of affordable dwelling units through the use of affordable, affordable housing development certifications and agreements, authorizing the promulgation of rules and regulations to establish and maintain affordable housing programs, and imposing fines and penalties for willful noncompliance with program requirements and agreements. Ms. Lily Williams, interim Director of the Department of Building and Housing, shared the 2020 median family income limits chart developed by HUD. Ms. Williams shared that the median family income limits will change for the 2021 calendar year. The updated income limit should be available in May. Council members asked questions related to enforcement and the decision to use a definition for affordable housing that met HUD guidelines. Ms. Nona Watson, Director of Economic Development, shared several reasons why the HUD guidelines work. First, they provide a wider range and wider reach. Next, they're inclusive of the number of people in the family, whatever that looks like. And three, there is a $6,000 difference between HUD's numbers, which is inclusive of Carlisle and Harrisburg and the city of Harrisburg's numbers. There are no proposed amendments to Bill 16 of 2020. Bill 18 of 2020 is an ordinance amending Part I of Title IX, Streets and Sidewalks, and adding thereto Chapter 9-117, entitled Street Vacations and Providing Standards, therefore requiring the submission of proposed land development plans or lot consolidations in conjunction with a petition and furtherance of the development of affordable housing, declaring the development of affordable housing associated with an application to vacate a street to be a qualifying public good. Council discussed offering one amendment to Bill 18 of 2020. The existing language at line, between lines 79 and 80, subsection F, reads, "Community engagement plan that must report on all community engagement related to the petition." The proposed amendment, again, subsection F, "Community engagement plan must report on all community engagement related to the petition. The petitioner must show proof of at least two public community engagement sessions related to the street vacation." Bill 19 of 2020 is an ordinance amending Chapter 5-503, Tax Abatement and Exemptions of Title V Licensing and Taxation Code, to adjust real estate tax incentives to better provide for the development of affordable housing units in the city of Harrisburg. Council discussed offering one amendment to Bill 19 of 2020. At line 77, the existing language reads, this is number two, Section 503-3B shall not apply to qualified affordable housing developments. The proposed amendment to Section 503-3B, Sections 1 and 2, shall not apply to affordable housing developments. I would appreciate my colleague's support of the entire Affordable Housing Legislative Package as amended. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Now we will move on to report from Chair Daniels on the work session of April 6, 2021. Ms. Daniels, are you ready with your report?
Yes. One second. So on April 6, the Parks and Recreation Committee were able to discuss Resolution 27-2021, which was a resolution authorizing the submission of an ARP Community Challenge 2021 Grant Application to fund the purchase and installation of benches around the Capitol area greenbelt. This is a grant that ARP Community, ARP Community Challenge puts this grant forward every year, and we've made submissions in the past for different activities. This year, we are optimistic that this, we can receive this grant. If we receive these funds, there are about 36, they would be funding about 36 benches on the greenbelt, depending on the cost of what the benches will be. The, speaking for the resolution where Dave Baker and Ms. Wilmore are grant manager. And the turnaround time on this grant is pretty quick. So if we receive these funds, we should be able to to have everything installed by the end of this year. The goal, since this is an ARP-funded program, the goal really is to make spaces, open spaces, more accessible to people who are older and with disabilities. So once we receive notice that we have received the funds, our senior centers and senior living facilities will be, we will be having meetings with them and the community at large to discuss the areas where where bench, where the benches and the kinds of benches that will be most useful to, to the targeted communities would be placed. But again, the application is being, I believe, submitted either today or yesterday. But, but we should be hearing from them relatively quickly, and as soon as we, if we do get it, our residents will be able to see benches on the greenbelt relatively shortly. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. We now will move on to report from Chair Mattson on the work session of April 6, 2021. Mr. Mattson, are you ready with your report?
I am, President Williams. On Tuesday, April the 6th, the Community and Economic Development Committee met to discuss Resolution 24, a resolution approving to a preliminary final land development plan to construct a multi-story mixed-use development featuring commercial space for grocery, restaurant, coffee shop, and offices, approximately 85 residential units, and approximately 500-spaced parking garage in the block bounded by Boyd Street, North Fifth Street, Riley Street, and Fulton Street. Council received an overview of the plan from Direct, Planning Director Knight. The applicant was present as well and provided information. Council members asked questions. There were a few points of concern. Council members wanted more clarity over an outreach plan for MWBE local participation. There was a robust conversation around affordable housing and parking. The applicant did not provide an economic study, so council members would like more information on the economic data that this project will provide. Through the discussion, it was determined council would need to pass the land development plan with certain conditions. President Williams, myself, and Councilman Majors met with the applicant earlier today to discuss the conditions and reached an agreement on the following conditions. One is the applicant shall hold at least three public outreach sessions directed at local contractors to provide information on the project and bidding opportunities. Number two, applicant shall engage and outreach to local schools within Harrisburg metropolitan area to incorporate paid internships and/or apprenticeships into the development project. to incorporate paid internships and/or apprenticeships into the development project for individuals at least eighteen years old. Uh, so we will be proposing an amendment to put these, uh, conditions into the resolution. Uh, the applicant, uh, you're on that, has met all the city's rules and regulations through planning and zoning. And with that, I would, uh, advise my, uh, colleagues to vote in affirmation of the resolution. Thank you. And that, that was it for the business of the Community and Economic Development Committee.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mattson.
Thank you.
We now move on. Reports from Chair Majors on the public hearing and the work session of April sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Majors, are you ready with your report?
Yes, um, President Williams. On April sixth of two thousand twenty-one, the Public Works Committee met to hold a, uh, public hearing on Bill three of two thousand twenty-one. Bill three is an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the City of Harrisburg, various unnamed paper streets, uh, Kelker Street and Walker Street within the block bound by Boyd Street and North Fifth Street, Riley Street and Fulton Street pursuant to Chapter three dash one oh nine of the codified ordinance of the City of Harrisburg. Uh, we received a, uh, from Council Baldock, a true and correct copy of Bill three of two thousand twenty-one. Additionally, present at the hearing were counsel for the applicant, uh, which was, uh, Mr. Sir, uh, the applicant, uh, Kevin Baird, as well as Gary Albanian, uh, during the, excuse me, during the, uh, hearing, we heard from, uh, the, excuse me, we heard from the council and the applicant on, uh, the reason why they were seeking the street vacation, which was, uh, directly related to Resolution twenty-four of two thousand twenty-one, which is for, uh, the, uh, kind, excuse me, the construction of a multi-story mixed-use development, uh, that would include the, uh, commercial space grocery store, uh, potentially, uh, approximately eighty-five residential units as well as, uh, five hundred, uh, space parking garage. Excuse me, Mr. Baird noted that, uh, part of, uh, the parking is, as they're looking to get into a contract with, uh, G S A, as we are, uh, as the courthouse is going to be finishing construction in two thousand twenty-two, and, uh, this project that they are playing needs the street vacations in order for them to be able to proceed. Uh, council members asked several questions of the applicants. We also heard from residents, uh, of the City of Harrisburg during our public comment period on, uh, Bill three, uh, that expressed, uh, concerns regarding the affordability of the air, uh, the, the project included in Resolution twenty-four, as well as concerns around, uh, parking and ensuring that there was going to be, uh, affordable housing in the project. Uh, noted during the hearing were that we were going to be looking at several different affordable housing, uh, bills that were going to be coming through, uh, Chair Bowers Committee, as well as, uh, the final resolution on twenty-four on the land development plan, uh, that came through Councilman Matt's committee. Part of, uh, and I asked that we move the bill forward, uh, out of the public hearing, and that was, uh, based upon additional conditions that were going to be met after a meeting that was held between, uh, Chair Mattson and the applicant. Uh, that meeting, as, uh, Chair Mattson alluded to, occurred earlier today, uh, and I would ask that we, uh, move forward with Bill three of two thousand twenty-one and have it on the agenda for this evening. And that concluded our Public Works Committee hearing. Additionally, uh, we held a work session on, the Public Works Committee held a work session on April sixth, two thousand twenty-one to consider Bill five of two thousand twenty, which is an ordinance amending the City of Harrisburg's official traffic control map pursuant to Chapter three dash one oh nine of the codified ordinance of the City of Harris, excuse me, of codified ordinances along North Sixth Street and North Seventh Street in the zones between Her Street and Riley Street. Uh, excuse me, Mr., uh, uh, the city engineer, Mr. Martin, provided an overview of the project. Uh, what this will be doing is removing parking spaces that currently exist on Seventh Street between Her and Riley Street, uh, that were, uh, metered spaces, uh, that were there in front of, uh, the Fiat Building, and we will be, uh, moving, uh, to have a number of spaces in that same zone, but moving them, uh, west over to Sixth, North Sixth Street, and they will be between Her Street and Riley Street. Uh, Nancy Kine from Standard Parking was on the call and, uh, was amenable to this change. The change is occurring, uh, due to, uh, changes that the city is, uh, working through now on construction on Seventh Street to improve the traffic flows there. Uh, the new spaces that will be metered are currently there now and not metered, but Standard Parking is going to be implementing a, uh, a touchless, uh, metering system for those parking spaces that exist on North Sixth Street between Her Street and Riley Street. Uh, they were okay with the changes, as we have to make sure that any additional changes to parking are, uh, in their zones are amenable by Standard Parking. And I would ask that, uh, the city, excuse me, I would ask that my members of council, uh, would vote affirmatively on Bill five, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, and that concludes our report. Thank you, President Williams.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Majors. We now will move on to ordinance for re, I'm sorry.
My apologies, my apologies. I'm sorry. Uh, additionally, I forgot I had one additional, uh, note that, um, uh, earlier today, uh, we had a meeting, and I would ask that, um, later in the meeting, I am going to, uh, make a request that we bring up Bill twenty of two thousand twenty, uh, uh, from the floor. Uh, that is, uh, the resolution that, for the other street vacation that is currently, uh, sitting in the public, it was before council, and we held a meeting, uh, in March, uh, a public hearing in March, and provided that briefing at our March legislative session. So I will make that request at, uh, the proper time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Council members, we now will move on to ordinance, the first reading we have done this evening. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, Bill seventeen, two thousand twenty. Ms. Houston, please read that into record.
Bill seventeen of two thousand twenty is an ordinance amending Part three of Title seven, the zoning code of the City of Harrisburg to provide certain zoning relief for developments which contain affordable housing dwelling units in the City of Harrisburg to encourage the development of affordable housing throughout the City of Harrisburg.
Ms. Bowers, I understand we have an amendment.
Yes, so this will be a technical amendment to the existing zoning code. Um, this amendment is simply to ensure the chart, um, is in line with the text on line one twenty-three within the bill, which allows an accessory dwelling by special exception in the C N district. Uh, the chart incorrectly identifies accessory dwelling unit as allowed by right in the C N district. So, uh, the, the chart is at line seventy-six if anyone, um, is looking within the bill. I move to technically amend Bill seventeen of two thousand twenty at line seventy-six for accessory dwelling unit, strike the P in the C N district and insert S E.
Okay, have a second.
Second.
Any discussion, any questions? Hearing none. Please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Bill seventeen amended of point twenty passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Bill eighteen.
I may just, uh, just a point of clarification, that that was an approval of the amendment and not of the bill as amended, as amended.
I, I know.
Thank you.
It will continue on, and then I would say as amended. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowery. Moving on to Bill eighteen, two thousand twenty, Ms. Houston.
Bill eighteen of two thousand twenty is an ordinance amending Part one of Title nine, Streets and Sidewalks, and adding thereto Chapter nine dash one seventeen, entitled Street Vacations and Providing Standards Therefore Requiring the Submission of Proposed Land Development Plans or Lot Consolidations in Conduction, in conjunction with a petition to vacate a street incorporating a public good proposal requirement for each petition, and in furtherance of the development of affordable housing, declaring the development of affordable housing associated with an application to vacate a street to be a qualifying public good.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers, do you have an additional amendment, please?
Yes, so this amendment is to ensure petitioners hold community outreach. This is line eighty for everyone's reference. I move to amend Bill eighteen of two thousand twenty by inserting at line eighty the phrase, "The petitioner must hold at least two community outreach sessions."
Okay, so any question, I have a second, please. I'm sorry. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Houston, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Resolution eighteen of two thousand twenty amendment passes.
Bill eighteen, I'm sorry, Ms. Houston.
Excuse me, or did I say resolution? I'm sorry, Bill eighteen.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Bill eighteen of two thousand twenty amended passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Bill nineteen, the two thousand twenty.
Bill nineteen of two thousand twenty is an ordinance amending Chapter five dash five oh three, Tax Abatement and Exemptions of Title Five Licensing and Taxation Code to Adjust Real Estate Tax Incentives to Better Provide For The Development Of Affordable Housing Units In The City Of Harrisburg.
Again, Ms. Bowers, you have an amendment?
Yes, um, this amendment is to ensure prevailing wage remains a requirement for LERTA. So for everyone's reference, this would be line seventy-seven. I move to amend Bill nineteen of two thousand twenty by inserting at line seventy-seven, Sections one and two of Section five zero three dash three B.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Any questions, any comments, council members on the motion? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Just a question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Majors?
Okay, yeah, no, just a question, um, and for Chair Bowers. I just wanted to make sure. So I know in the current LERTA, uh, we do have the language there to ensure prevailing wage, uh, the clarification was just for, is, this is a clarification put in another place, correct? Or I'm just making sure I'm understanding why the clarification is needed in this section and not just how it currently exists in the LERTA.
Sure, so the existing langa, language for that section, um, it reads that it, the, um, the second section should, should not apply to qualified affordable housing developments. So we know that there are three, um, criterion outlined within the LERTA, um, minority participation, uh, local labor, and the prevailing wage are the three, I believe. Am I correct, Ms. Baldock? Okay, thank you. So, um, we are noting that basically the, um, minority participation and the local labor will, will not apply to affordable housing developments, but the, uh, prevailing wage will. That makes sense.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments, council members on the motion? Hearing none, please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
I'm sorry, uh, Bill nineteen of two thousand twenty amended passes.
We now move on to ordinance for final passage. Ms. Houston, please read Bill three, two thousand twenty-one into record.
Bill three of two thousand twenty-one is an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the City of Harrisburg, various unnamed paper streets, Kelker Street and Walker Alley within the back, block bounded by Boyd Street, North Fifth Street, Riley Street, and Fulton Street pursuant to Chapter three dash one oh nine of the codified ordinances of the City Of Harrisburg.
Any additional questions or comments, council members, before the vote? Hearing none, please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors? Mr. Majors?
Hello, can you, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Bill three of twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Moving on to Bill five of two thousand twenty-one.
Bill five of two thousand twenty-one is an ordinance amending the City Of Harrisburg's official traffic control map pursuant to Chapter three dash one oh nine of the codified ordinances along North Sixth Street and North Southern Street in the zones between Her Street and Riley Street.
Any additional questions or comments, council members on Bill five? Hearing none, please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Bill five of two thousand twenty-one passes.
Moving on to Bill sixteen of two thousand twenty.
Bill sixteen of two thousand twenty is an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City Of Harrisburg, adding thereto Title twelve entitled Affordable Housing, establishing incentives for the development of affordable dwelling units through the use of affordable housing development certifications and agreements, authorizing the promulgation of rules and regulations to establish and maintain affordable housing programs, and imposing fines and penalties for willful noncompliance with program requirements and agreements.
Any additional question or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Bill sixteen of two thousand twenty passes.
Moving on to Bill seventeen, two thousand twenty, as amended.
Bill seventeen of two thousand twenty as amended is an ordinance amending Part three of Title seven, the zoning code of the City Of Harrisburg to provide certain zoning relief for developments which contain affordable housing dwelling units in the City Of Harrisburg to encourage the development of affordable housing throughout the City Of Harrisburg.
Any additional questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Um, no.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Bill seventeen as amended passes.
Moving on to Bill eighteen as amended.
Bill eighteen as amended is an ordinance amending Part one of Title nine, Streets and Sidewalks, and adding thereto Chapter nine dash one seventeen, entitled Street Vacations and Providing Standards Therefore Requiring the Submission of Proposal Land Development Plans or Lot Consolidations in conjunction with a petition to vacate a street incorporating a public good proposal requirement for each petition, and in furtherance of the development of affordable housing, declaring the development of affordable housing associated with an affordable housing, excuse me, so, associated with an application, excuse me, to vacate a street to be a qualifying public good.
Any additional questions or comments on Bill eighteen as amended, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Bill eighteen as amended passes.
Moving on to Bill nineteen is amended.
Bill nineteen of two thousand twenty as amended is an ordinance amending Chapter five dash five oh three, Tax Abatement and Exemptions of Title Five Licensing and Taxation Code to Adjust Real Estate Tax Incentives to Better Provide For The Development of Affordable Housing Units In The City Of Harrisburg.
Any additional questions or comments, council member on Bill nineteen is amended? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Bill nineteen as amended passes.
We now move on to resolutions.
President Williams?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion at this time, if I were, can make a motion to add bill twenty of twenty twenty to tonight's legislative agenda.
Then a motion to bring it off the table, Mr. Majors has a motion to bring bill number twenty off the floor, may I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
President, Mr. Majors, councilman, just for clarification, that motion is to bring it in under a vote for final passage, is that correct, councilman?
That is, that is correct, yes, it's under final, we're under final passage, yep, final passage, my apologies.
Okay. Any questions or comment? Council members?
I'll just, yep, I'll just note for the record that bill
There's the most on the table in a second?
Yes, it was.
Yes. My apologies.
That's okay.
Yeah, yep, so the bill is bill twenty of twenty twenty, it's an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city Harrisburg, rights away within the block bound by Boyd Street, Urban Meadow, North Fourth Street, Riley Street, and Logan Street, and within the block bound by Harris Street, North Fourth Street, the Boyd Street, Urban Meadow, and the Logan, and Logan Street pursuant to chapter three dash one oh nine of the codified ordinance of the city of Harrisburg. I am asking that we bring this up as when, after our last meeting, we were requested information from Capital Region Water on how they, on their plan, to see if they had any issues or concerns with that, we did receive work from Capital Region Water that there was, excuse me, that there were, that they had no concerns with the project. Additionally, as was mentioned earlier, President Williams, Councilman Madison and I had met with Mr. Nitek who is on this project earlier. One of the things that was discussed at our public hearing when we had this was a commitment to work on affordable housing in future projects, you know, we commitments for for future projects is something that is a point of contention for a lot of folks because in the city of Harrisburg, we have heard this in the past and have not seen anything necessarily come of it, but we did speak with him and he provided us with some information on from developers that are looking to do affordable housing units, not just here in the city of Harrisburg, but other places, and we know that working with with HUD and a lot of the legislation that's happening at the federal level to provide additional dollars for affordable housing, you know, should some of this federal legislation pass, we will see more dollars that are being able to come to our communities for future development. As we discuss affordable housing, one of the things that is a, of major concern for for everyone is ensuring that our residents have the ability to live, work, and play, not just in this area of the city, but all areas of the city, so we will be working with Mr. Nitek and some of the individuals that he mentioned to set up meetings to have discussions about this moving forward. We know that this is a issue at a, we're facing at a national level when it comes to affordable housing and ensuring that people have opportunities and not just in the current housing stock, but any new housing stock that may become available. So, and this is a partnership that needs to occur as we look at these developments that includes city, state, local, and federal government in terms of funding for projects of that capacity, so you know, we are looking forward to having those future discussions, and I just wanted to make sure that the residents knew and understood why this was coming up, and the other part that I was, also wanted to make sure that we had movement on first was Chair Bowers affordable housing measures as we were looking to ensure that those measures were included in the city ordinance as we move forward, so that is my comment on the motion.
Okay, Mr. Majors. Is there any additional questions or comments? On bill nine, number twenty? Hearing none, Ms. Houston, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Bill twenty of twenty twenty passes.
Thank you, Ms. Houston.
No problem.
We now
No, it was, that was, hold on, that wasn't passing, that was just the motion.
Bring it from the table, yes.
Wait, that was to bring it from the
Off the table.
Off the table.
Off the table.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Majors, I was getting ready to say that. Now we move forward and vote on bill twenty of twenty twenty. Is there any additional questions or comments? Please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Bill twenty of twenty twenty passes.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. We now will move on to resolutions, resolution twenty four, two thousand twenty one. Ms. Houston, please read it into record.
Resolution twenty four, twenty twenty one is a resolution approving a preliminary final land development plan to construct a multi-story mixed-use development featuring commercial space for a grocery store, restaurant, coffee shop, and offices. Approximately eighty-five residential units and approximately five hundred space parking garage in the block bound bounded by Boyd Street, North Fifth Street, Riley Street, and Fulton Street.
Mr. Madison, I, you have an amendment on that particular resolution?
I do, President Williams.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make, like to make a motion to amend resolution twenty four of twenty twenty one to add two additional conditions to the approval of the land development plan as follows, number one, applicant shall hold at least three public outreach sessions directed at local contractors to provide information on the project and bidding opportunities. Number two, applicant shall engage in outreach to local schools within the Harrisburg metropolitan area to incorporate paid internships and or apprenticeships into the development project for individuals at least eighteen years old.
Okay, you have a second on the motion, on the amendment?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on the amendment? Hearing none, please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Resolution twenty four, twenty twenty one amendment passes.
Now we vote on resolution twenty four as amended, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Oh. Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
No.
President Williams?
Yes.
Resolution twenty four as amended passes.
Thank you, Ms. Houston, moving on to resolution twenty five of two thousand twenty one.
Resolution twenty five of twenty twenty one is a resolution approving the second proposed twenty twenty one budget reallocation.
Council members, any additional questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question, President Williams. During our budget and finance committee meeting, we mentioned one of the commitments that we received was to receive the quarterly update on unexpended funds, did we ever receive that from the administration? We talked about that for every proposed budget reallocation.
This is Mark Woolley, that'll be sent out tomorrow. I have to meet with the team to go over the report. I, I, I would, I didn't want to transmit it as as I had, so you'll have that tomorrow.
That okay, Mr. Majors?
Oh, okay, that's when we'll receive it.
Okay.
Nothing I can say to that. Okay, I look forward to receiving it.
Good, time to come up, do it tonight. Is there any additional questions or comments on resolution twenty five? Please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Ma, excuse me, Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
No.
President Williams?
Yes.
Resolution twenty five, excuse me, twenty, yeah, twenty five of twenty twenty one passes.
We now move on to resolution twenty six of two thousand twenty one.
Resolution twenty six of twenty twenty one is a resolution ratifying the submission of a redevelopment assistance capital program grant application of up to eight million dollars to fund renovations of the Martin Luther King Junior Government Center located at ten North Second Street, Harrisburg, PA, one seven one zero one.
Council members, any additional questions on resolution twenty six? Hearing none, please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Resolution twenty six of twenty twenty one passes.
We now move on to resolution twenty seven.
Resolution twenty seven of twenty twenty one is a resolution authorizing the submission of an AARP Community Challenge twenty twenty one grant application to fund the purchase and installation of benches around the Capitol area greenbelt.
Any additional questions or comments, council members? I have only one comment. Mr. Baker, did you get a list of where those benches will be installed? Are you on, Mr. Baker?
Yes, I'm here. We actually have a map, if you guys like, it's kind of a rough draft of our locations. Would I be allowed to share my screen?
Why don't you send that to us?
Okay.
So that we can see exactly where they'd be placed.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Can you make sure you send it to Ms. Houston, please, so that the council members will get a copy of that?
All right, will do.
Thank you.
Sure.
No other questions or comments, council members? Please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Resolution twenty seven of twenty twenty one passes.
We now move on to resolution twenty eight, two thousand twenty one.
Resolution twenty eight of twenty twenty one is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to submit and enter into a traffic signal maintenance agreement to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and authorizing the designation of the city engineer as the sole signatory of the agreement.
That will be placed in Public Works Committee. We now move on to O Business, council members, is there any O Business this evening, Mr. Allen?
Yes, just a question and comment for legal. I wanted to get an update on where the ordinance we've been working on with the Human Relations Commission is for nondiscrimination. I'd like to see where that stands, if there's an updated copy of the legislation, if I could see it. And I'd just like to encourage, if it's at a stage that we could actually have it introduced to the legislative session, I'd like to get that onto the calendar for discussion.
Councilman Allen, I, oh, was that Neil, was he speaking?
Yeah, that was
Go ahead, Neil.
The, the commission was still reviewing some of their proposals as of last night at their monthly meeting, as I understand it.
Okay.
And they're working with now Deb Sibbering, who's our, who's the liaison to them. I believe it's very close to final, they are still debating a couple of fundamental issues about recommendations which are more technical than substantive at this point, like how many meetings a year should they be required to have, and things like that.
Could you send me the latest iteration of where things stand with that, just so I can see it?
Yep, we'll send you that tomorrow.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Council members, any other additional O Business? We now move on to news, I'm sorry, Mr. Majors, we did not
Yes. Okay, can you hear me, I'm sorry?
Yes, we can.
Yes. I just want to first thank Chair Bowers and the task force, the Affordable Housing Task Force for all the work that they did thus far. I'm glad we are getting, you know, something on the books to address this, this issue. And I know just in some conversations that I've had, you know, with council, Chair Bowers and others, you know, we want to make sure we have something on the books, but I think, you know, we may be able to look at some potential amendments moving forward, because there's going to be a lot of development coming to Harrisburg. Having something on the books is great, but I think if we, you know, I know some of the concerns regarding the enforcement piece are things that we need to look at, and hopefully we can work closely with the administration to get those addressed, as well as any other changes based upon some of the feedback that we've heard, but it was important for us to get something on the books, so just thank you and look forward to working with you on making some adjustments moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Any additional O Business, council members?
Yes. Yes, thank you, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you, I did not move this legislation by myself, so I wanted to thank the mayor, thanks for being open when I came to you with my research and tabs and my notebook with what I thought could work, so thank you, I appreciate all of your support during this drafting process. I would like to thank the Solicitor's Office, Ms. Baldock has been a true blessing with all of her assistance in the drafting process as well. I would like to thank the members of the Affordable Housing Task Force, Ms. Nona Watson, Ms. Lily Williams, Mr. Jeffrey Knight, and Mr. Jama, Jama Jones. I know although Mr. Jones is no longer with the city of Harrisburg, I just wanted to publicly thank him for all of his assistance in drafting bill nineteen of twenty twenty and ensuring that council members and the public understand the LERTA, right, his presentation that he shared during our council work session on February sixteenth was helpful to me in understanding, and I hope it was helpful to everyone who had opportunity to view that work session meeting, and I wish him well and the best of luck in all of his future endeavors, so I just wanted to say thank you. Please know that the residential piece of the affordable housing program has, is not lost upon us, those are our next steps, and this is not the end of the work of the Affordable Housing Task Force, so I look forward to working with you all again to produce legislation that we know will be beneficial to as many residents as possible, so thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Bowers, anyone else?
Yes, I would just like to, you know, comment on some of my votes, thank you, Councilman Bowers, for all of the work you've done, this is really great. My objection to bill number seventeen was because of the what happens if we don't regulate a lot of the negative consequences is they will be grandfathered in before we even develop regulations to the less, to more nefarious actors, so one of the things I would urge you to consider is developing a set of regulations or bills to address the negative consequences of those adjacent units, because otherwise they'll be grandfathered in once people start acting on them, and and then there will be nothing that we could do about them. So that's one of the things, the other thing is, you know, you know, it's great that we have the affordable housing, I, you know, and I want the public to understand that these bills aren't these bills aren't addressing low-income and very low-income folks. These are basically the bills that will protect the next wave of, uh, workers who will be displaced if we don't do anything about, um, the development that's happening in the city. Um, I know people think of anyone who's critical of development as, uh, kind of a naysayer, but if you look at the population of the city of Harrisburg over the last few years, where we have seen some significant, uh, apartment developments is that there hasn't been a population increase. So what's really been happening is population displacement. Um, and we're just replacing one set of, you know, older residents, uh, pre-existing residents with new residents, and we're not really growing the city. So we need to embrace and develop policies that, um, keep people in and bring people in. Um, our city at its highest population, I believe, was a hundred thousand, and I think we could get to a hundred thousand people without losing, um, the residents that we currently have. And I think this, uh, this set of bills does, does a good job at preventing the next wave of displacement, um, or a next wave of displacement. Um, but we need to do a little bit more. And, um, I do want to explain, because I've historically always been for, um, you know, street vacations. Um, street vacations are things that the city needs to maintain. Um, they are these streets that, uh, we don't have the resources to maintain and keep up with, and if anything happens on them, they are a liability for the city. But I had to think quite a bit on this, on the street vacations, uh, today, because one of the things that struck me is that without the street vacations, um, the, you know, the, the, the developer really depended on the city to act for them to be approved for financing. And what that tells me is that this was a developer that wasn't coming in with the wealth to invest into the city, but was leveraging, um, a resource the city had to hopefully develop well, um, later on if this project works out. And what we've seen in the city in the past is that when we don't have a developer with, who is sufficiently wealth, well-funded, um, you know, sometimes you take that risk and you get a good project, but sometimes it ends up being like a dog project or like an incinerator, um, where you have someone who is taking on a project they really can't handle, and the banks are clearly aware of that. Um, so I would like to see us, um, you know, so the, so in my thought process for the street vacation, um, you know, I really do think that we need to be more thoughtful of other things that we as a city have as resources, that others people who are coming in, as well as people who live here, can leverage, um, to increase their financial well-being. Um, and so I know this is probably my first time voting against the street vacation, but, um, the, the, the developer just really does not have the funds himself to, to do this project. And, um, you know, as a colleague once told me, a developer who, who needs, would be, you know, who needs, uh, you know, a, a government to do something as a broke developer. Um, and I don't know that, I don't know his person, I don't know their finances, uh, in much depth, but, um, to me, that's a red flag, and it just really reminded me of something like the dot project, and again, the incinerator. So, um, so yes, I'm happy and I'm relieved that we have something that prevents additional displacement, but we do, I would like us to see as a whole, um, thinking as a whole, uh, to think more aggressively about how we keep our residents in while we try to attract new people. And that's it. Thank you. But thank you so much for at least doing this.
Any other additional comments, council members?
Yes, uh, President Williams, uh, yes, under old business. Um, I think, uh, two things I think, uh, for Resolution twenty four, uh, I, I share some of the, the same sentiments as, uh, our, our chair does on the, with this, uh, this, you cannot, our chair, uh, with Councilwoman Daniels, uh, shares, uh, with respect to, uh, the development. I think, uh, we need to, uh, I think the one difference is there is no city finances tied up in, in, in this project at all. Uh, this is all private development, and if it works, great. If not, then we will see likely another person come before us with a preliminary and final developmental plan for that property. Uh, so I am cautiously optimistic, but, uh, you know, we will see how that plays out. We want to ensure that, um, you know, we're being mindful. I think the other thing, uh, other comment I wanted to, to make, or, or I guess update I went to receive is, uh, from either Chair Mattson or, uh, President Wilson. We were looking at trying to do additional meetings with respect to the comprehensive plan. Uh, we had some comments earlier, uh, in our meeting regarding, uh, the comprehensive plan, and I think one thing that, uh, you know, I think the public, uh, you know, just for the public's awareness is, uh, it's, as a, as a council, as a legislative body, we, we're it's, it's difficult to align the, a draft plan with current and with current legislation that's moving because it's still in draft form. We need to go through and ensure that, that this comprehensive plan is adopted. Uh, then that gives the city a actual document that is, was approved by council for us to be able to, uh, move forward and hold our, uh, city government accountable and ourselves accountable, quite frankly, and anyone that wants to come into, to the city Harrisburg. So one of the things that I'm looking for is an update. I know we talked about, you know, trying to find space and do additional meetings. This process has been going on for, um, at least six, seven years, um, you know, so, uh, I know we've had several different iterations. You know, we've expended a lot of, you know, city dollars, time, and resources, uh, of, you know, previous councils, current council, you know, and the public. So I'm just trying to understand, uh, what that, what these next steps look like as we're trying to maybe hold some additional, uh, meetings and ensure that we, you know, are, are continuing the engagement process because all of these things tie together, and if we want to have a plan that works, and then that we can hold ourselves, city government, future development, um, you know, work with the school district, county, everyone to move forward. So just want to know what that, um, the timeline is for additional meetings.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to answer that. Thank you for the question. I, I was going to say something anyway. Um, so what I have proposed, um, is I reached out to a few different, um, local neighborhood associations and community groups to get their input and, uh, see if they would want to partner with us on holding a few in-person town halls. Um, a snag that we've encountered is, uh, because we're going through a fourth surge of COVID, uh, just want to make sure if we do in-person that it is safe. Um, but some of the locations we've currently identified is potentially having four, one at Reservoir Park, one, uh, with the Southeast Allison Hill Neighborhood Association, um, uh, the Uptown Folks, uh, Cam Curtin, and, uh, the Riverside Folks mentioned either Italian Lake or the Zumbo Shrine as a potential location for a town hall. And then, uh, Friends of Midtown said that they were open as well for having, uh, a town hall as well. I think we can discuss a chapter, chapters at each. And then throughout that period, my recommendation would be to do one final push to the community to give us those comments. Um, once we have completed the town halls, uh, look to voting for approval. Um, you know, I'm open to doing it. If we think we can do it safely in outside spaces, I'm open to doing it as a, as soon as possible, but if we want to wait until the, there are more vaccinations and we can do it a bit, uh, safer in other locations, uh, doing a little maybe into the summer and then vote for affirmation in the fall. Um, but yeah, that, that's sort of the strategy at this point. Um.
Okay, okay, Mr. Mattson. Any additional old business? We now move to new business. Any new business, council members?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Um, thank you. I just wanted to make a note, uh, that there is a, there will be a mandatory workshop for CDBG and ESG sub recipients on Wednesday, April twenty first, twenty twenty one. There will be two opportunities. Um, one at ten AM and one at two PM. Uh, the discussion topics will include eligibility, application instructions, uh, program expectations, and questions and answers. Um, the Department of Building and Housing is asking that you please RSVP to DBHD Housing at HarrisburgPA.gov, no later, um, than this Friday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty one, um, to ensure that you receive the login information for the workshops.
Okay, will that be virtual, Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other new business, council members? Well, just a quick reminder, on the twenty seventh, we will not have a meeting April twentieth. We will have a me, three meetings on April twenty seventh at five o'clock PM is the executive session. At five thirty, we move on to the work session, and then we will move into the legislative session into the clock. So please place that on your calendar. No additional new business? Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Um.
You have a second?
Second.
So, officially adjourned for this evening. Good night and have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Here.
Good night.